Good evening, Ipswich. It's 7:01. I'd like to call the Ipswich School Committee Meeting of 11:421 to order. Thank you all for coming. We're also on YouTube now. And hopefully, we have some people out there as well. So, welcome. Welcome, everyone. Caroline, would you like to -- see, I almost did it. Would you like to read the school mission statement, please?
Yeah. Ipswich Public Schools Aspires to Empower All Students to be Global Citizens, For Effective Communicators, Analytical Problem Solvers, and Savvy Consumers of Information. We propose to do this through an emphasis on communication, critical thinking, creativity, self-management, perseverance, and collaboration. Students will be active partners in authentic learning, offering voice and choice, and demonstrating competency.
Thank you. Announcements. The next school committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November 18th, at 7:00 PM in the middle school, high school ensemble room. The following subcommittees will be meeting. Communications on November 16th at 5:00 PM. Budget, November 16th at 6:00 PM. Negotiations, November 17th at 3:45 PM. All school and district offices will be closed on Thursday, November 11th in observance of Veterans Day. And I think, Kate, you have an announcement. And anyone else?
Yep. There will be an informational meeting on the override on Tuesday, November 30th, in the basement of Town Hall from 6:30 to 8:00 PM.
Thank you, Kate. Any other announcements? So, special acknowledgements.
So, this evening, I'd like a big shout-out to Sue Marcos, who was recognized as the Coach of the Year for the Cal Baker Division. She's the Boys Cross Country Coach. The team won the Cal Champions, the Cal Championship last week. So, congratulations to Sue Marcos.
And, thank you, Dr. Blake. Are there any other special acknowledgements this evening? Now, if you don't fill in in the Student Representative Report, I'll ask Jonathan to fill in some of it as well. But I'm waiting for yours, Caroline, first. So, maybe you can do a team on this as well.
All right.
You're up. Thank you.
Hello, Ipswich School Community. Within the Sports Department, all of the fall sports teams had an excellent season this year. The girls' field hockey team won their Cal Championship and have qualified to play in the Division Four MIAA Tournament.
Okay.
The girls' and boys' soccer team also qualified to play in the Division Four MIAA Tournament. And the Boys Cross Country Team won their Cal Championship. The girls' volleyball team also qualified for the Division Four Tournament. And Amelia Stacy from the Girls Cross Country Team won ninth place overall in the most recent Cal meet and has now achieved All-Star status. For clubs and fundraisers, there are various volunteer efforts happening around the school. The Green Team is continuing their Hello Neighbor Refrigerator Project, which they started last year. The Environmental Club continues to do trash pickup events, marsh data collection, and leave hikes for students on local walking trails. A new after-school investing club was also started this year, being taught by our math teacher, Mr. Shippen. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. I think she -- did she cover all the sports?
Yeah, just one, a couple editions.
Sure. Thank you.
Caroline always does such a thorough job. She sends out, you know, she sends out a questionnaire that we send out to all students, and they send data, information to her, and she reports to you guys. So, she's got a great system. So, tonight, I just came back from the Jackploft Stadium, where the Boys Soccer Team competed Bay Path Regional Vocational School to advance to the next round of the MIAA Playoffs. The volleyball team is actually the number-one seed in the entire Division Four of the Girls Volleyball Team. So, and Finn Russell is also making All-Star to the Cape Family League for the Boys. But, other than that, Caroline, his job here is all covered.
Thank you. Thank you both. The, I like your investment club formation as well. I think, you know, financial literacy is important for our students, because some of them, you know, this is the final stop before, they need to be financially literate. So, it's really important. Really, really happy to see that. Thank you.
Caroline, who did you say was teaching that?
Mr. Shippen, the new math teacher.
Yeah, we're going to. Before we go to citizens' comments, I'd like to, we have a bunch of citizens in the audience, and we want to, we want to hear from you. And we, I suspect you're not here for the school committee's self-evaluation review, but you're here for our Select Board Meeting on November 15th appearance. So, what we're going to do is take that out of order, probably. But we'll let you have, we'd like you to hear our citizens' comments first, from you on that. We'll move that up, so you don't have to wait all night. That's all I'm trying to say. Thank you.
My name is Eric Gilson, Washington Street. Violet Park is my neighborhood. They were giving my hat, and I was a little taken back when I read this article in the paper. You know, I think I better heard something about this before it was announced in the paper. And my issue, and I've been through all the minutes of this meeting, of this committee for 2021. And there was no vote that I could recognize. Maybe it's in the meetings I think are public. But I think one of the issues I had was reading those minutes. And I read almost every word of those. And you guys are young folks. There's a lot of stuff you folks do. But you had a consultant in, in April, I believe, who told you and advised you on how to present this new school proposition. And one of the things they said was transparency and reach out to the community. From this article, it seems like you folks are leap-friending ahead to a single piece of property without investing the rest of the community's opinion. My opinion is, this is a park in my neighborhood. And besides that, it's not a great spot. It's a great spot because it's center of town. It's not a great spot for loading kids off buses and hundreds of parents coming up across the road tracks into Lower Squirt. But I think that's an issue we can have later. I think you need to table this issue, and then reach out to the community and see what the community thinks. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, everyone. Maria Walters, Levin Maple. There are a lot of new faces here. Only a few do I recall from the last time we did this. I feel like it's deja vu all over again. And I was standing here about four years ago. Many of you are new. And I'm going to repeat the same thing that I said early on in the last process. You can't have Violet Park. There are at least four really excellent reasons why you cannot have it. One, it is a water sink. It is a place where all the water, if you live near it, which I do, every time it rains, it feels like you're walking on a sponge. If you build a school there, you will flood all the neighbors who have houses not at a higher elevation. In your water study, you concluded, please, open space is one of the best mitigation factors for flooding, which is what we are going to see in the next 30 years. Sea level rise and rain. Reason number one. Reason number two is that it is the only public area, open area, for the most dense part of this city that we have. There is no other park. It is simply unconscionable that the people of this committee would even entertain the idea that it is okay to take this away. You add to this now that 500 feet down the road from this new school, you want to have all three of your emergency services, police, fire, which is now on a two-lane road, and it's less, I mean, I live there. It's a tenth of a mile. And you're going to put all of the city services and the new school in one area. Three reasons why it is unconscionable to think about it. To make the town and go through this, it was really terrible. For those of you who weren't there, people lost friends. There was a horrible process that took two years, which pitted people against each other. It was dreadful. The thought of going through it again is giving me heart palpitations. The other reason why you will likely not get it is because you saved Violet Park, which, the reason we're here is because our emails are all still current, all 48 of us, we have agreed we will challenge it in court. And you know that it was challenged in court by another city during the time, under Article 97, it was challenged by another town, and the townspeople won. And they could not take a park that was designated for the people away from the people unless it was so severely needed that they had to have it. So, what you are doing is you are setting up the deja vu all over again for this town to go through a really terrible period where we feel like we're fighting our government all the time. And it's, I cannot even believe that we're doing this. I cannot, I'm assuming that you all lived in this town during that time and remembered how terrible it was. The last thing that I'll say is the other reason that you will not get Violet Park is because there are too many contingencies focused against you. If you add up the Two-School Movement, which we've already started getting in touch with them, because there is a big Two-School Movement in this town that wants two schools, you add that to the Save Violet Park contingent, and you add that to the people who just don't want to have their taxes raised, you will likely never get through all the steps to get the money, the approval. And what needs to happen first, what did not happen first last time was you need to have a referendum in this town. You need to ask people, do you want two schools or do you want one school? And you need to figure that piece out. And once you know what they want, then figure out the place, because you are going to resurrect all of these arguments again. Two-School Movement, there were huge amounts. There were hundreds of people on that email. If you guys remember when we voted on that, they had to move it into the gym. There were so many people. You are doing it again. I beg you, please, stop the craziness. Do a referendum. Find out what the people will support. If the town supports one school, fine, I will support. Violet Park will back up with all its pressure. But we're on it already. So, we're ready for a fight. We are not backing up, and we are not doing what we did last time, which was we waited, waited till the end. We are already on it. So, please, reconsider and do it the right way. Have a referendum, have a town referendum, have meeting referendums. Figure out, two schools or one school. Then, when you want one school, where does the town want that school? And Violet Park is, for the reasons, water, all of those reasons, all of us other people who are not in elementary school, and I get elementary school kids are important, I had some. But it is really important that you recognize other demographics in the park.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms., I heard you clearly, but I didn't hear your name clearly.
Maria Walters.
Thank you.
W-O-L-T-E-R-S.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Irene Joseph. I live at Forests, Washington Street. The park is in my neighborhood. I have an issue with the agenda. The preparation for Select Board Meeting is not clear as to the topic of discussion. And I think that you need to postpone that discussion and re-advertise it as a discussion of one school or one to the Violet Park. But I think it's a mistake for you to continue talking, because you haven't adequately notified people of your discussion.
Hi, I'm Mark Wallman of 68 High Street. I also live in the same neighborhood of Royal York Square. During the last school debate, I was an ardent supporter of two schools, and rather multiple, one, two. In that debate, for me, it came down to two issues, size and location. And I, and many other of the two schoolers, were willing to compromise on either one of those, but not both of those. And so, when the final proposal came forward as one school in a more remote location, there was nothing for that community to support. So, as you move forward, I would encourage you, please, come up with a proposal that looks different than what went forward last time. A large school in a remote location, whether it's Doyle or Pony Express or somewhere far out of town, will only reignite it. The definition of insanity is trying the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. My advice for us, this community, would be to build support and consensus around size and location before we go to MSBA. All right? Get that, let's have that discussion. Let's have it. And listen to some people who are against the discussion of Violet. I'm hearing the exact same thing. Let's have a discussion about size and location first. Get the community around that, and I think we'll have a much more successful support. So, and thank you for your willingness to serve on the school committee, and thank you for your willingness to take up this issue, which would probably be a lot easier to kick that can down the road. But the conditions of both schools are so poor, that's really not going to be an option. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard tonight? Okay. We are going to, we have our high school principal here, who's going to give us a 10-minute presentation on rankings. And then, we're going to take Item D out of order and, and listen to that after Jonathan's presentation. So, if you want to stay for Item D, it's coming up right after Jonathan's instead of three down the list.
It's going to take you 15 minutes.
15 minutes. Maybe take 20. Take all the time you need. Thank you.
Oh, to get set up?
Oh, to get set up. No.
Evening, Doctor.
What? What was that number?
That was quick. I was looking to see where I had to go on Saturday. Right where it should be. Hampshire Regional. They won, yeah. Yeah. Hampshire Regional is in West Hampton, Massachusetts, which is where I grew up, in the western part of the state.
There you go. He's said to be the number-one seed now.
Yes. I think Hampshire, they play in the top comics, too, Hampshire Regional. All right.
Secant coming to the field. It's sad. It's always nice to be challenged.
So, about a month ago, Boston Magazine came out with its annual ranking of schools in the Boston area. I think they ranked 150 schools inside 495. And as always, it's a little bit kind of confusing about where they get these rankings from. So, they took a bunch of factors into consideration. SAT scores, AP participation, AP proficiency, teacher ratings, what do you say, AP, so graduation rate, dropout rate, so a number of factors. So, it's hard to tease out which criteria they worked into their algorithm to rank us where we were. So, I called on Jim Dupew, our data manager for the district. He's really good at Data Studio, because Data Studio gives us the ability to, we can put our cursor on these different dots, and it tells us what the different schools are, the school names are. So, I have a theory that the best predictor of how states, of schools ranked, there was a direct relation between the income, the median income, and the ranking. And that was proven to be true. You can see this trend line here. You can see where we are. Jim labeled a little arrow. So, you see, the income is on the Y-axis. You can see if kids Dover Sherborn, you see their median household income pretty high. And you can see this trend line. It's not a strong correlation, but it's, you know, more than a weak correlation, for sure. And as my former counterpart and STEM, STEM director, agrees to say, correlation is not the same as causation. So, we have to be careful with this, because, just because, you know, a community has more money doesn't necessarily translate automatically that they're going to have a higher ranking. And so, Boston Magazine folks said that this, it wasn't taken into their consideration, median household income or the home value, which is also in the data table. So, I just wanted to put this other graph on here, because I wanted you to see this. It's kind of interesting. I can't scroll down at all. I think I want to present one right here. So, average class size, there's almost no correlation between class size and how well schools did on the ranking of Boston Magazine. So, not that the Boston Magazine is like the end-all-be-all of like ranking of schools, which is important. It's interesting to notice that when we have these debates about class size, it's not necessarily the most important factor in how schools do. So, anyway, looking at this data here, if we look at this line here, which I think represents about 100,000 for median household income, which is just below that. So, we're really outperforming these, these other communities that are higher income, and their higher, and their ranking was not as good as ours. So, if we're looking to move up in our Boston Magazine rankings, we should pay attention to other places that are similar to us in, you know, this very telling income bracket here, and were higher-ranked than us. So, places like Foxborough, Millis, Ashland. So, I did some of that. I can go to the next page. So, I, people on the committee who've been on the committee for a while, I'm a fan of advanced placement courses. I think it's a very rigorous program to study. I think it prepares students really well for college. And if you notice where we are on this trend line, so qualifying score on an AP exam is three plus out of five. And so, this is, these are all percentages of how schools did in terms of the number of kids who took the exam, or the percentage of kids who took the exam, how many of them earned a qualifying score. So, here we are here, with 86% of our kids who took an AP exam got a three-year higher, which is really good. So, one caveat, it's not necessarily a great thing that we have 86% of our kids earning qualifying score, in my opinion, because it could mean that there are other kids who would have benefited from taking an AP course and the AP exam, but they didn't, for whatever reason. And so, that self-selection of higher-achieving kids gave us a higher percentage of kids earning a qualifying score. So, I think we have some room below this, where we can have some kids who may be reluctant to take an AP course, to kind of push them and encourage them to take the rigors of that class. And we could anticipate then, if we do that, our average, our percentage of kids earning a three-plus could decrease a little bit. But I think the benefit of our school pushing more kids into AP courses, I think we'd be better off overall, because we have more of a higher percentage of kids prepared for the rigors of college. So, that said, we outperformed a lot of places. Like, I wouldn't want to be, I'm not going to pick on Georgetown. But, so, you know, Walpole, you know, qualifying score, but the rank was 68. Let's see who this is over here. We can probably predict. It's like, it could be probably Wayland, Dover Sherborn, back from Foxborough. Qualifying score is like 95-plus. That's pretty good. And you can see this trend line down here, the average income for communities and AP qualifying score. So, you know, here, we did pretty well. So, with, if you look at the X-axis, there are a lot of schools who, a lot of districts that have more average income, but did perform as well as we did. So, Bridgewater, Rainham. But again, same comment I just said, it could be that they really encouraged more kids to take APs, which could bring down their percentage of qualifying scores. So, anyway, just want to show you a couple more things. And Caroline has interesting data, too, she's going to share. So, I shared the data table with the AP stats class that this former teaches. And so, all the kids in the class broke down this data table. They all took like a different slice of it, kind of, tried to have a different take on it. So, Caroline volunteered to share her thoughts. So, I appreciate that. Just going to just sleep just for a second. So, interestingly, so, they also had Boston Magazine ranked, they call it honorable mention. So, class size, imagine being a class size of nine, 10 kids in a class. That's kind of unusual. Ben for housing buck. Where's my favorite? Oh, yeah. Percent of teachers with exemplary rating. Manchester Essex, congratulations. 58% of your teachers ranked exemplary. So, I think that's a bit excessive. If you familiarize yourself with the teacher rubric for evaluation, it's really, really hard to get exemplary. So, if I were the superintendent of Manchester Essex, I would have a hard talk with my principals and say, you got to make sure you get this under control. This is major grade infliction, in my opinion. But anyway, just so I'd share it over here. All right. So, you might be curious about like, so, I just showed you the percentage of kids who already qualified scores. This is percent participation. So, out of the total enrollment, what percentage of the kids took an AP course? So, I included a lot of schools that, you know, tend to outperform us, back in Foxborough. You know, the percentage points are five percentage points. More of their kids take an AP course than we do. But I wanted to conclude the Cape Family League schools. They're highlighted, just because we're often, fair or not, we're compared to the Cape Family League schools, even though some are bigger, some are smaller. So, we're kind of in the mix. I'd like to see us higher, get closer towards 30%, like Lynfield. I'm glad we're not Rockport or Shiten. Those are pretty low. I mean, 13%. That's kind of an elitist kind of number. I have that few kids taking, I mean, it's very similar communities to ours, and we're almost double Black Forest. So, we're right in the mix. I don't know if this is a correlation or not between the Boston Magazine, but it was something I wanted to look at to see where we were in comparison to other Black districts. And I think we've got room for improvement in terms of broadening the number of kids who are taking AP courses. So, Caroline emailed me her presentation. Okay, I feel like you want to speak from there?
Yeah, sure.
I can do slides for you?
Yeah. So, I was just going to focus on some of the general notes, where that Ipswich was ranked 39 out of 150 public high schools in Massachusetts, which is very good. And generally, like, what was said, schools that have outperformed us in the past, we were two ahead of Hamilton Wenham on this ranking list, and eight ahead of Masco, and nine ahead of Lynfield. And then, according to the Massachusetts Department of Education, we are considered comparable to a list of other public high schools. And Ipswich ranked higher than all of them.
So, Caroline's talking about, so if you go onto the DESE website and go into their DART comparison, they compare us to similar districts in terms of per people spending, size of the school, the demographics of the community. It's usually listed like 10 schools. And so, out of those 10, it sounds like we are ranked number one.
Yeah.
And from Boston Magazine, out of those 10 schools.
According to their list. And then, on slide seven, there's a...
Is this slide seven?
No. But... No, but, so the reading and SAT scores. So I think two back.
Two back?
Yeah, or three. Yeah, one more back.
One more?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, one more forward. So with the reading and SAT scores versus the Boston Magazine ranking, generally it seems like as you get further down the ranking list, the reading SAT scores decrease. And there's a strong negative linear correlation between the reading SAT scores and the Boston Magazine ranking. And so we're generally doing very well for 39. And then for the SAT math scores versus the Boston Magazine ranking, it's about, it's very similar. There's a moderately strong negative linear correlation between the SAT math scores and the Boston Magazine ranking. So as the ranking goes down, the scores also do.
So just note that the X-axis is flipped from the graph that I had before. So the closer to the origin is the higher ranked. The rank number one is a higher ranking. But here it's lower because it's graduated in a positive way, X-axis.
So where's Ipswich in that axis?
Ipswich is, I'm not sure if I can... They're 39, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Just try...
Yeah.
So we're around the 600 mark, I think.
Okay.
Which is very good, I think.
So it seems to be, when I looked at it, I thought there'd be a stronger correlation between SAT scores and the ranking, but it's, you know, but it's not like the deciding factor like I thought it would be. I thought that they'd weigh the standardized tests a lot heavier than you did.
Yeah. So it seems like based on what the AP statistics class was looking at on the data that was given to us, that most of the ranking was correlated with the scores on tests like the MCAS exams or the SAT exam. So as opposed to like the median house... Actually, but there was a strong correlation between those also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think what's important to take away from this is that class size was not a huge... I mean, it was listed as one of their criteria, but it didn't seem to weigh very heavily to their rankings.
And, yeah. And it was also the same thing with the student to teacher ratios. There wasn't a strong correlation at all. And it was similar to the average class size ones. There wasn't any correlation really between the ranking and the ratio.
So you'll see, I try to tie things together. So within a couple of weeks when we talk about the Ipswich High School Improvement Plan, you'll see an action step around increasing enrollment in AP courses. So I want to try to make the case to you guys tonight because you anticipate that later on. We'll present in a couple of weeks.
That's my question. Is anyone, is everyone who's desirous of an AP course getting access to one?
No, not just not. And so it's a balance between making sure that students are prepared. We don't want to set them up for failure.
Right.
But we also don't want to scare them. So I think some students are intimidated by the rigor of it. And so they just avoid it. But there are some kids I think are a little bit over ambitious. Like jumping from say CP2 level to AP level is not recommended. Sometimes kids do ask to make that jump and we recommend strongly against that. They should test the waters at the honors level first.
But that's your choice to let them into the AP course, correct? Not theirs, the students.
If the students demonstrate a lot of interest, they can talk to their teachers. And if the teachers feel that they, if they commit themselves to the work that's involved in the AP course, sometimes they'll give the kid the benefit of the doubt and say, all right, give it a shot. But don't expect you're going to get an A in this course because it's going to be stressful.
Yep, okay, understood.
Also, I think that a lot of the AP classes, especially this year for the seniors, seem to be getting more crowded, which I guess is a good sign, but maybe also part of the reason that maybe other kids aren't going because they're getting more crowded.
Okay. Does that mean we need to offer more?
I feel like I was just about to say that. So there's a couple of courses that keep coming up. We don't have this course. One is AP Economics. My glasses keep popping up, sorry. So AP Economics is a course we'd like to explore. And then AP Spanish is something I've mentioned in the past. So there might be some kids who are very linguistically talented, so they're not going to gravitate towards the STEM AP courses. So this might be something for them to, you know, jump in the pool with. Because it's more their strength than the other subject areas.
Great, thank you.
And I think a lot of kids, if they're interested in doing business or economics in college, they're looking to take AP Economics. We had five kids last year take VHS courses for AP Economics. And they all got fives, which was pretty impressive. They were super motivated. I think they studied together, but take it for five kids that take a VHS course and get fives on AP exams. Very impressive.
Right, that was going to be my question. So we have opportunities for students outside of the normal school day opportunities for kids to access AP classes. You just mentioned the online program.
So there are other opportunities to, for when kids take a VHS AP course, it takes up two spots because we have semester one, 25 spots, semester two, 25 spots. Because an AP course is a year-long course, it takes two. So it's taking up spots where other students could take a VHS class. So the state also includes in its advanced coursework, which is one of the metrics that schools get evaluated, high schools get evaluated with this percentage of kids who take advanced course, is dual enrollment. So we're looking to expand our dual enrollment opportunities as well. And we had a meeting this week with North Shore Pre-graduate College about starting to see if we can partner with them to offer either revote or in-person courses on information technology. Because that's the next pathway we want to strengthen.
Okay.
So are those kids that took the VHS AP Economics, are they included in these AP numbers?
They are, yes.
They are, okay.
Yep, yep.
Beautiful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Thanks, Jonathan.
You're welcome, Caroline.
No problem.
Mr. Moon, we already had citizens' comments. Would you like to make a citizen's comment before we continue the meeting?
I have a follow-up to be able to...
No problem. But if you do, please come to the microphone.
That was the time.
Jeff, Moon, Dr. Kim, Levin. My question is regarding, obviously we're talking about a lot of practice here. And I'd just like to know why this appeals to you more than the Dorion site? What is the difference between the Dorion and the Bielak site? We only cost about half a park.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Perhaps the discussion that we're going to have in a couple of minutes will align you. We're going to do the, we're going to take this out of order and talk about that next. Thank you, thank you for coming. All right, we're going to take the agenda item preparation for the November 15th Select Board meeting out of order and discuss it now if that's okay with the committee. And then go back to our normal course of business. The, as you know, we all have a, we're on the agenda for the Select Board of the November 15th meeting to discuss seeking a vote of the Select Board to allow the school committee to go to the community at large to permit that the school committee to study Bielak Park as a site for a combined elementary school. If the community is in favor by a two-thirds majority vote, then the school committee would be able to submit the site if the school committee thinks that that's the preferred site as for a statement of interest for a combined elementary school. So that's the, and that's what we're here to discuss. If that's the way that we should talk to the Select Board about this. The, what's different than, we're asking for the community's voice before we go on this subject, before we go forward to decide what we should do with a statement of interest, which is of course the first step in the building process of an elementary school. And that includes combined schools, two schools.
Right.
The whole matrix.
I think, if I can jump in, I think this is the very beginning of any conversation and a path forward as far as a new building project is concerned. As I reviewed the minutes from meetings and the notes from the last building project, it looked to me like there was a lot of work done early on around utilizing Bielak Park. It was studied to some degree. But then the Select Board never, well, the Select Board refused to allow the public to have a conversation and a vote on it. And so, you know, part of my thinking here is, you know, in doing due diligence for anything moving forward is we need to know from the entire community what their thoughts are collectively around utilizing Bielak Park. We really don't know that. And we've got a, we've got a strong contingent of concerned citizens from that neighborhood who, I get it, I completely understand, are concerned about losing Bielak Park as a park and, you know, having a school in their backyard instead. Completely understand that and I don't think there's anybody that can deny that. But I do think that a conversation is needed. And I think, in my mind at least, the first step is to have that conversation with the Select Board to say, hey, look, we've got to start moving a building project or projects forward. We'd like to hear from the community if Bielak is even an option. Because if it's not an option, based on the community's input, then that changes the whole conversation. And then we have to figure out, okay, with the very limited spaces that we have available in town, because those spaces are shrinking, they're being sold off and they're being utilized for other purposes. We still have some dire needs for our school buildings. So I've sort of pushed on this a little bit to be able to have this conversation with the Select Board, for starters. And I think there's, you know, it's the beginning of a very long conversation about the future of our schools and the placement. To Mr. Allman's point earlier and to Mr. Jellison's comment, you know, we've got to, we've got to find consensus and we've got to, you know, we've got to go take it in steps. So that's sort of where I am in terms of this conversation.
The other reason for seeking this from the Select Board is what's different from the last? If we bring the exact same project to the MSBA, we, I think there'll be a question of what's different than the last project that failed. And we need to exhaust all of our avenues in the town. And we, you know, we have fiscal year '24 feasibility study in the strategic plan. Another thing that's different is we've started a strategic plan in the town. There are three things ongoing already in the strategic plan. There are waterworks, water main replacements, major road repavings, as well as a public safety building. The schools are prominently called out in that strategic plan. The first hurdle is fiscal '24 feasibility study. That means we would like to submit a statement of interest this April. However, I don't know if we can make that submission date because the town meeting is in May. So we get, we need to, we met with the MSBA and there are three elements that they said have led communities like ours with failed building projects towards, on a path to success. And that is an education plan, a site, and community support. We'd like to do those, we'd like to cross those three hurdles before we spend the town's money on a feasibility study. So we have the time in which to get those answers. And that's where I'm at. So we will, we will go there on the 15th of November, go to the Select Board on the 15th of November. And we really need to put this site out for a community input. That was not the case the last time. We've done a lot of due diligence on that site. And see if we can go to the community at large and get their opinion. So I'd love to hear some...
Can I ask a process question? So I saw an email earlier about 15 and then what you said earlier about 2/3. Where are all these numbers coming up, the different steps we have to take? Before I thought it just had to be released by the Select Board. But then there's some criteria, some vote. I don't know if that's a town ballot, if it's a town meeting, if it's a special town meeting. And who said two-thirds versus a majority versus any other number? And what are the steps that you've laid out with the Select Board? Or what are the required steps legally you're going to get there?
We're going to get, we're going to learn much more about that in the coming, in the coming weeks and post-Select Board meeting. One step is an Article 97 relief, which would be sought by a two-thirds majority of the state legislature to turn this part, to turn a park into another use. The, one of the criteria for that is to have available land for equivalent uses. For example, Gloucester did an Article 97 request with the state legislature and to build their combined elementary school that broke ground two weeks ago, the night of our last school committee meeting. And they did a land swap for a park. What's different about what we have the ability to do is do that and keep open space downtown now that a public safety building is not going to the Winthrop School site. Also, the field replacements, some field replacements can go to the Dorion site as well. But, you know, we can keep that core downtown open space downtown.
Do we know if Select Board vote has to be unanimous or is it just majority in this case?
I mean, you said unanimous Select Board, unanimous Conservation Commission, two-thirds town vote, and there are all these criteria that I don't know where those...
I don't know where those came from. I don't know where those came from either. It's the last time, when the Select Board took this issue up last time, the vote was one abstention, two in favor, and two opposed to releasing the park. That tie went to the park not being released.
You know, my feeling is this is just, this is the start of the entire due diligence process. I think another issue we obviously face is enrollment now. We were looking at our two elementary schools with about 750 combined students. And our plan was for a 775-student school. So with all the growth in town, new development, people moving in with families, that's another issue we'll have to assess. You know, whether or not one school does make sense? Do we want to have one, you know, what do we plan for, 900 students, 1,000 students? How does that all work? So again, this is just part of the entire process of kind of going to the town, understanding what the town wants and working these questions through. So this is by no means us saying we want Bielak Park as the only option. This is us saying, let's explore all the options so that we can go back to the MSBA with a plan that will provide, will get their support and more importantly, get the support of the people in town.
So here's my concern. Since you and I were on the process and I've been part of the process for a very long time. I mean, we looked at how do we have the two elementary schools for a long time. And it was very, very expensive to try and bring out the schools with a less equipped product. So we came to the idea that we could do a single school. And the only site that would support a single school, we thought, would be Bielak Park. And we spent a lot of time talking to people about Bielak, citing it, doing design, and thought we had consensus, we certainly had consensus with the school committee unanimously. We talked to a lot of stakeholders, we did a full survey of the community and town. There's a big... There was a big interest in a walkable site that was considered walkable. And so we had it, you know, 7-0 on the school board. Then the Select Board said, absolutely not, that's not. And then we started a parade around town. We tried Winthrop and we got blocked from that site because we didn't have parking and then we, and people worried about traffic. Then we went to Doian because we were going to the path of the resistance. I think during that process, we had at least three or four town meeting votes asking for people's opinion on what we should do next. And that opinion changed based on what we were asking for each time. I think we should pick a spot, build our project around it and submit our plan. And pick the best spot and pick the best plan for our community and see if we can get consensus behind it rather than change based on who shows up at a meeting one day or another and on what vote we have at one meeting about what we should consider. This whole idea of like vetting things in advance, I don't know how useful it is other than the fact that we have to get the piece of land released by the Select.
Can I speak?
Yep.
The difference here is that we'd like to include that in the matrix though. The Biolak discussion in the matrix of where we should cite our school. That's why this is a separate issue.
So we have to do that first?
Yes, we have to do that first. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but the other question is, what are the criteria? You're basically saying you don't know what needs to happen, other than the fact the Select would have to release them.
Right, we have to go to the Select Board first with their permission. Jeff?
So I've, you know, heard already community feedback and we've discussed it, that the trouble with picking a spot without making it evident that we're filling out that matrix of what are all of the available sites that are available in town or could be available to support whatever type of configuration that the town has. And that consensus piece is big. I think there is a big piece in seeing, is Biolak a possible site that should be included in the matrix? But it is important, I think, in the way that we ask and the way that we communicate with the community at large that this is not a decision that has been made. But once we know all of the available options, we can have those sessions. And, you know, whether that needs to be stated publicly as it's being now and I think supported by a majority of people on this committee, or whether we need to do more listening even before the 15th, I think is important that we spend some time and acknowledge the voices that are very loudly saying this process is moving fast.
I just, thank you. Emily?
Yeah, I think, you know, this has been on.
Pull it toward you.
Obviously, you know, I have an elementary student now and I have a two-year-old. So I have a future beneficiary of whatever's decided or not decided. And I do think that we should do what we already haven't done well, which is stop, ask the community, listen, and then based on what we're hearing, move forward. I think what I'm already hearing, and I don't know if it's the same as what Jeff's hearing, is people, we're already behind the eight ball because people feel blindsided, whether or not that's a right or wrong feeling, they feel that way. They feel like this was less than transparent to move forward in this way. I know we've had public conversations about this process, how to do it. But I do think I, I'm wrestling with, one, I don't like uninformed conversation. Then it's just conversation going nowhere. I do think people need to know what realistically do we have available to us. But I do think a general conversation to inform us before we start making public steps is important in bringing the community together and trusting this body to do this work. And I don't get the sense that that trust is there at this point in time. And so, you know, I do agree with Jeff. I don't think the timing is right for this request right now. And I do think we should follow what we were advised to do by the consultant, which is do some listening and then map out a plan based on that listening. I get, there's a cart-horse issue here and I understand that. But I think the community is the most important piece of this. And we're already starting from a place where they feel mistrustful of the process, which is not what was intended. But I think it's important to hear that and to act on that.
What the community, I'd like the community to know is that we're at the very genesis of the new project. So this is the beginning and transparency is very important, I acknowledge that.
One of the problems we ran into last time is we'd talk about a site. Like we'd say, Mile Lane would be a great site for a school. We planned it in the past. This is how it could look, this is what we could do. And then the next meeting, all the Mile Lane people would show up and last time, you can't do it. And then we'd say, Wedges, we'd talk to them and see if they can do it. And then we get blown up on that. So we moved from site to site to site to site to site last time at the will of every meeting. And the problem was we get a small section of neighbors who fight whatever it is. Or downtown people who fight that there isn't enough traffic, there's too much traffic and there's no parking. And then we were like, of course, we'll move it and we'll take care of it. And the only place where people didn't fight us was out at Doian. And that's why we went there. And we lost because no one liked the idea of being out of town. People want a walkable school down. And there aren't that many lots in town that are reasonable to approach. It's the Winthrop School Site as it is, which has challenges in the construction process and Biolak. And so I'm perfectly fine sitting on it as long as we want, but I do think Biolak's a, it's got to be a conversation. A piece of the conversation is very.
Well, it also takes it out of that conversation if we go on the 15th and they say, they schedule a public hearing and then the Select Board says, absolutely not, we're not releasing it, then it's off the matrix and it's not considered.
Right.
You know. I think starting with this first step to at least see if it's even an option before we then go to the town and just say, look, what are we talking about for configuration, size, location? If we know that Biolak's already out, then that's an easy discussion, easier discussion. Versus saying, you know, let's kick the can down the road and maybe go at a future date to ask for it to be released. My feeling is just get it over with now. If they're not going to release it, they won't release it. And if they agree to, when it goes to the town vote, it's a pretty high hurdle, two thirds to get for them to release it, so. And all I do, I don't think the probability is high. What's that?
Who set two thirds?
That's two thirds for the, two thirds is for a bond issuance.
Right.
So I'm making a broad assumption. But we want to make sure it's a super majority.
Or even 50, you know, even 51%. At the end of the day, the Doian project failed by 39 votes, you know, but it was a majority.
No, that was.
Right, that was two thirds.
That was two thirds.
No, but I'm saying it failed by 39 votes for the super majority.
Correct.
It was a town meeting vote, not a town vote.
Right. But, you know, there was a pretty heavily attended town meeting, you know? So I think it's a pretty good indicator of what people overall wanted.
But don't we strengthen our position by saying we conducted four listening sessions? We posted them publicly, they were heavily attended, they were well attended. There is a strong contingent that really opposes Biolak Park. However, the overwhelming majority of people seem to support it. Doesn't that bolster the request versus?
It does bolster.
We don't know?
Yeah, it does bolster the request. It also gets a lot of, we don't have the, we're not going to ask for Biolak Park. We're asking for permission to go to the community to discuss Biolak Park.
I know, but if we've already alienated the community, we're behind where we'd like to be. If we say, okay, there's some concern, maybe we can, if you're saying the timing between April and May doesn't work anyway, do we have to do it now or can we do those recommended listening sessions?
We plan on doing recommended listening sessions.
I know, but Chubb, you're not listening to what I'm saying. Is there any downside to pausing this and saying, okay, let's try and do this? We can't do it by April anyway because of the timing of town meeting.
The downside that I see is if we have these listening sessions before we go to the Select Board and get a vote, then we end up discussing and having all these listening sessions and getting all this feedback on something that might not be a viable option. We want, we need to know, we want to have to conduct the listening sessions and hear from the community about things that are actually possible, but not things that are not available. And it's a chicken and egg thing.
Right, but then the town feels heard and I think it's more important to this process that the community feels heard from the outset. And I get, again, I totally understand, like this is what are our available options? We're just trying to figure it out. But already people are feeling like this was not above board. And so I think if what we're really trying to do is bring people together and really try and say, no, we listen to the community. I don't see, if we can't get it done by this April date, then what's the downside? What's the downside of listening?
Well, those listening sessions are certainly going to happen because they're, they are mission critical. I agree with you 100%, but I.
Let's start with the community.
Long, yeah, yeah. But along with what Kate is saying though, I think, I don't want to have happen what happened the last time. All these conversations went on, it was great. All this stuff was going on and then we get to the end game and the Select Board says, nope, conversation done. Find another place. That's exactly what we don't want to have happen now. So I want, I want to go to the Select Board, have the conversation, say, look, we'd like to study Biolak Park as a potential school site, potential. Can we, can we talk to the community? And if we talk to the community and the support is there for consideration of Biolak for a school, will you release it?
I think.
And I think that's the conversation that needs to happen. Otherwise, we're going to spin our wheels and we're going to go right down the same rathole that we went down the last time where everybody did all this work, the community spent all sorts of money to have five members of the Select Board decide, nope. Town, you don't get to pick, you don't get to decide.
But would you, would you still go to the Select Board and ask for this property if you knew ahead of time because you'd conducted listening sessions? Most people don't want it, most people aren't going to support it. Would you still go through that process? Would you still put the town through that? That's what I'm saying, inform your decision, inform your request before you make the request. Either, yeah, there's people heavily opposed, but the majority of people are actually really in favor because we talked to them versus which is where we are now.
I understand that, but right now that is a chicken and egg thing. But we do not have the ability to talk to the community about going to Biolak because it's not available to us to talk about.
Why can't we talk and have listening sessions? We're not studying, we're not doing anything in particular. We're talking, we're allowed to talk.
We're allowed to listen and that was the point, right? That was your point. We need to sit and we need to listen and this is not that.
Understood.
And I have a concern of just going again with the ask of can we study Biolak Park where it sounds like that's a singular site that the school committee has said is the appropriate place for a combined school. And I think if we look at it, we do want to study everything that's available. And it's not a necessary ask of would you release it to us because that moves us into, well, this is the site we have. But if it were, if we could get some indication, and I don't know what recommendation you got. I'm assuming that the Select Board doesn't make non-binding votes. But, you know, we can at least get a flavor of which way at some point would they consider doing this? And then it allows us to say, should our matrix have five sites or four sites? What should our configurations be? So I think there's some value in going to them, but not looking as though this is a decision and we're just moving ahead with it. And I don't know how you balance getting that guidance.
I mean, I don't think it is a decision. I, my feeling is we, it's the one site we haven't, to my experience. I came into this school committee in the middle of the last project when Biolak was already off the table. So I came in just as it was turning from Winthrop. But my perception is that because of the, there was a lot of detailed look at Winthrop and obviously a detailed look at Doian. And so all we're saying is can we look at, can we look at Biolak? Can we just think about it? To me, that doesn't seem like a decision. It's just a, can we consider this? Can we see what people think about it? Not meaning us, but people, people in Ipswich. And I just don't. I mean, I looked back as we started after our last meeting. I went back and I looked at the email that went out the day after the town meeting when the vote failed. And the letter from the, you know, Stronger Schools trips, which the two-school group stated that the problem was it was not at Biolak. Not that it was one school, but that it was the site. That to me says, at least then, that there was strong support, even among people who supported two schools. I have been referenced to what Mark had said about, you know, hey, maybe it's one or the other, but not both. You know, not, not big and, and on it Doian, but maybe there's compromise there. But I feel like in that, in that letter, in what we heard at town meeting, there was support for an in-school site and this is the one in-school, in-town site. And this is the one in-town location that we haven't really gotten a chance to look at. Again, not saying we're going to do anything, but just saying, hey, can we, can we talk about it?
Right now, we can't.
No, I get it. I guess I'm just trying to back us out of, like, reset the process. And the community is a huge, is the huge part of this process. And we've already started down a path before listening to the community. If we really want to engage from a place of strength with the community, it's not, it's not starting without them. I guess is my point. I, believe me, I get it, but.
We're asking.
I know what we're asking for, I'm saying we can ask.
May I say it once again, what we're asking for? We're asking for the Select Board to allow us to go to the community to let us study Biolak Park as part of our school building matrix.
I get it.
And at the end of the day, we have no control over what the Select Board does or doesn't do. So they may have a conversation with us next week and decide to take no action, potentially. Or to say yes or no, but they could also say, you know what, we're not ready to have any kind of a vote on this, so.
Or they might say, what does the community say? And we're going to say, we don't know.
No, we wouldn't say we don't know.
So I was part of 100-plus public meetings about this school, right? And you all have kids who've taken the U.S. history and they've all read the kind of most favorites, number 10 from Madison. You know, all that stuff about factions. And what happens is you say Biolak Park and a nice crowd from Biolak Park showed up and said, why are you doing Biolak Park? And you say Mile Lane and the people from Mile Lane show up and say, why are you doing Mile Lane? And you say, we're going to build it at the Town Hall site. People say, there's a toxic waste dump at the Town Hall site, you can't build it there. So they're all, you're going to get local groups that are powerful because they're a small group of people. But if you look at the broader community, there was a ton of support for Biolak in the last round. We've all done this, we did this 10 years ago, or however many years ago that process. We went through each iteration of it and each iteration, we just got, people were like, you're blindsiding me with this new idea that it could be here or that it could be there, it could be this. I never heard about it until yesterday. We've been in a conversation at the community level for 10 years on this topic.
I think that's an important piece too. The last time, the last building project, as of this year or next year, all of the students that were, would have been in Doian and Winthrop are already in the middle school. All of them, kindergarten on. So it's a completely different group of parents, other than the parents who have multiple.
No, it isn't, because I'm here.
Yeah, I said, other than people who have multiple, you know, children. But that whole, that whole, I want to say generation, it's not the right word, but that whole group of students has moved through and, you know, the buildings aren't getting any better.
I know, but I feel like we're also still approaching this, like the town isn't the same. We've already practically outgrown what we would have built, right? So we're not even having that conversation.
We're smaller.
No, we're not.
No, we're actually bigger. Our enrollment's going up a little bit. We're 748 today. That is also a conver. The, that is also a conversation that occurs after you get accepted into the program, then, then you talk about enrollment, and so, so that, that does come later, and it's actually a good, good process for us, because that's a year and a half out.
I know, I just feel like, if we're trying to reset this process, if we're trying to re-engage the community, if we're trying to be transparent, I think we start where this consultant told us to start, which is, listen, just listen, don't talk, don't engage in the conversation, listen to what people have to say.
I understand, I respect that, but I, but we, and we are
But, no.
That's not fair, but, but the, the, we cannot have a discussion about Bielak Park right now, because the five members, two members of the select board, five years ago, said that we can't, so our narrow issue, our narrow discussion, is just, can we include this in the matrix? And then when we include this in the matrix, I, I would fully, I hope that we would fully intend to, to have a broad listening session as per recommendations.
Yep.
So
On multiple sites?
Yes.
Yes, because there's a lot of discussion out there, well, why aren't we talking about Doian?
Right.
And I think the answer goes back to what Pop was saying, is we, Doian's a known entity, we know it's a Bible site, we know there's good support for it, but it didn't pass, and it was a very narrow margin, but it didn't pass, and I think it's going to ourselves to look at why it didn't pass, what was the opposition, and kind of prove to the MSBA that we have, that we're coming back with more than just exactly what we did last time.
And are those factors still in play about why it failed?
Right.
And what the situation was?
And the matrix includes other sites other than the park and Doian, I mean, it's got the downtown sites.
It'll include, it'll include Winthrop.
Yeah.
We have two sites that we control, Winthrop and Doian. We've lost a couple sites that were in previous matrix.
Mile Lane is out.
We control the Town Hall proper.
Excuse me?
We control the Town Hall proper.
Oh, that's true, too, thank you.
I think if we do decide to go on the fifteenth, to ask for them to release it, prior to that, we need to be very clear about the process, because I, I agree with Emily, I don't think, I don't think people really understand the process, I think there is that feeling, we're not being transparent, because the process isn't clear at this point, I think the town as a whole assumes that we're just going after Bielak to build a school on Bielak, and that's what we want it released for, and we're going forward full force with that. As we just talked about, that's not the case, it's about exploring all of our options, we need to know if Bielak is one of those potential options. If not, then it's not, if they say no, then it's done, we can check that off our list and move on.
Or, I would all, I would add, or if, if the feedback that we get from the community is, we're not interested in that.
Correct.
You know, and so it's, it's not just the school, it's not just the select board, it is the community as well, very important.
My fear is, though, you know, when you, I think when you have listening sessions, you may tend to get all the interested parties at those sessions, and maybe the people that are, should, would certainly come vote for or against, would not be as likely to attend, so maybe we get a skewed view versus doing it this way.
Yeah.
And that's my only concern, and again, you know, it's, I, I am concerned that taxpayers feel like this is something that we're pushing down their throats, and in reality, it's just simply not, it's about opening up, the site has a potential consideration, it's not us saying we're going to build a school there, we get it approved by the select board.
Is there any further discussion?
So what are we going to ask the select board on the fifteenth? What do you expect them to say back? Are we going to ask them to allow us to consider it?
To go to the community, to permit the school committee to study Bielak Park as a potential school site for a combined elementary school.
And go to the community means a town meeting vote?
Yes, if, no, we'd go, we, the, the, yes, we'd go to the
For the way down the line.
But that's down the line.
It would be after listening sessions.
But that's in May.
Not as consideration.
That's for May's town meeting.
So if they say to us, well, we need the permission of the community, that means we have to wait, right?
Correct, we have to wait until spring of twenty-three, to submit our SOI, April twenty-three.
To our vote.
Yes.
And then consider our options, submitting SOIs, spring twenty-three.
Correct, 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 and this is one step on the path, to see if it's a viable option, and we would ask the community whether Bielak would be a viable option for us.
Actually, one other thing about listening sessions, last time I felt like we had a lot of listening sessions, and I was not on the committee, but I was involved, and people, there were so many options, there was all configurations, there was a million sites, and so what we have talked about is trying to, is there anything we can do to try to narrow some of that down and make some decisions ahead of time, you know, whether it's real out of sight, whether it's make a decision on a configuration, so that's a little bit of a concern for mine, for listening sessions, without any of that kind of ironed out on our side, any of it.
I envision two rounds of listening sessions as well, if we go to the, the select board and get an affirmative nod that we should go to the community about Bielak, would have that first listening session.
Just about Bielak.
Yeah, just to talk, to talk about whether that should be included as a school site, and then we'd go and do the rest of our meet, then we'd go to town meeting, and then we'd have the time to formulate the plan. If it wins a town meeting, it's included, if it's not, if it doesn't, it's decided once and for all, and it's decided by the community, it's not decided by the sitting select board. And we are a town meeting, town, not a city council, community, and most of our major decisions like these are decided by the community as a whole. All right. Is there any further discussion?
May I just say something briefly?
We, yes, go ahead, Mr. Moon, but you'll have to come into the microphone again, sir.
I understand that the select board has control of the park right now, the reason they have control of the park is because when the park was purchased, it was not turned over to any other department, so like the recreation, or to parks, or whatever to take, maintain it, so it became the custody of the select board, so they have control of it, but essentially, the townspeople own that park because it's under ninety-seven, so regardless of whether the select board decides to turn it over to you or not, you have to get a two-thirds vote from the people of the town to approve it.
Understood.
So essentially, the voters are the ones that have control of it.
Understood.
Regardless of what the select board decides. That said, one of the town meetings prior to the vote for the Doian, I can't remember if it was Eddie Ross or who, who was, we were discussing about the park, he had a non, but he asked for a non-binding vote at town meetings to see how many people were willing to turn the park over for a school, and this was of the blue, it wasn't anything that was on the agenda, and by more than two-thirds, the president's voting against turning the park, it was just, they were being, people were effeminate at that time.
Great.
We have a big hurry.
We understand that, we understand that, thank you, thank you, sir. I'll be going to take this one last comment, sir, and you are the last comment, because we're outside of citizens' comments, but I don't, I don't want to make, I want to make sure you're heard.
Thank you, so I just want to be clear, so, Mr. Witt says, okay, we're just going to go to the select board and say, okay, can we reach out to the community and see if Bielak is an option? And Mr. Stevens says, we're going to ask him to release Bielak Park, so we just, are we asking him to release, or we just asking, like, can we have the conversation with the community? Because that seems unclear from what I was listening to.
Fine.
Yeah, so I mean, them releasing it, as Mr. Moon just said, obviously, doesn't mean anything, other than you can go forward in exploring options with the town, we need the two-thirds vote at town meeting for it to physically be released to us. So if we were to ask them for, can we consider that as a potential option within our school site search, that's our plan on the fifteenth, to ask them.
I think you can answer that question yourself, of course you can consider it.
Would they support it?
And
So
So we want to go to, so it's a two-part, it's, it's, we need two approvals, sir, we need a two-thirds approval to, to use, to use, to study Bielak Park and submit it for an SOI, and then if that's the case, and the school committee has done all the listening, and our superintendent, with the school committee's, with the school committee's majority vote has decide, decided to recommend it as a park, we would, as a combined school site, we would have to go back again to the town for a feasibility study on that, so there's another two-thirds hurdle we have to get over, we realize there's a two-thirds, and those are, those are hurdles we have to get over for the Doian site again, or any other site we have to go to.
I understand that.
And then, and then we'll have to also, if Bielak's the site, we have to go to the state legislature for an Article ninety-seven vote by a two-thirds majority of the state legislature. Now, those are a lot of hoops to jump through, but, and, and there will be a lot of time to discuss the merits of doing that or not, we want to make sure that all our options are on the table.
On the fifteenth, the school committee's going to request that Bielak Park is released as an option.
We're going to seek a vote of the select, no, we're going to seek a vote of the select board to allow the school committee to have the community be the deciding factor on whether we're able to use Bielak Park or not, not the select board, that's the big difference, we want to go to the community, and not, and if the community says on a two-thirds vote that it is, then we would like to, then, then the select board would release, but we'd have to get that two-thirds support from the community first.
The release is obviously contingent on the two-thirds vote.
Correct, correct, we're not asking them to release it.
You know, there are other sites, right, so you seem to be concentrating on Bielak, you know, and Bielak is always an option, right? Whether the select board says, yes, you can have the conversation, if they say you can't have the conversation, that's not up to them whether you can have the conversation with the community, whether Bielak is an option or not. It is an option, with all the hurdles you have to go through, as well as other locations in town, they're all options. So you don't need to go to select board to say, I want the option to be, um, legends' sun pot, right? Those are options that you can present to the community at any time.
I know that, but we don't want to waste the community's time if the select board is not, is not desirous of us to do, to, to, to do, to go to the community, because they control it.
I just have one more comment, keep that in mind, my recollection on the school building committees way back when is, they started the work on Bielak, and then they realized that they didn't have control over it, that the, that it was a park with a Chapter ninety-seven designation, I think that came after they started doing the work on that project.
It did, you're correct.
That's because we studied twenty sites and
Right.
You're correct.
Top one was Bielak, we planned around it, and then we asked permission.
And then we didn't know at that time.
That's correct, that's correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
The only ones who really control our town hall is
Correct.
And Doian.
And Doian.
Okay, is there anything else, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm up.
You're up, our next item on the agenda is diversity, equity, inclusion in the Ipswich schools. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I just wanted to take a few minutes, just to share with the school committee some of the work that's going on in the, in the district around diversity, equity, and inclusion, it's drawn a lot of attention in the public school, in, in public schools in particular around the country, we're no different, so, you know, thinking it through, you know, the, sort of the, you know, the end game for us around diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI, and our work in Ipswich, we want the Ipswich Public Schools to be a place where all students, staff, and families feel and are valued and included, we want to prepare our students to become compassionate, civic-minded, and inclusive participants in environments that are more diverse than where they grew up. We received letters from alumni last year who appreciated their academic preparation for college and life beyond Ipswich High School, but felt that we dropped the ball when it came to preparing them for the vastly different cultural experience that they would have in college or in the workforce, and we know that there's still a lot of work to do. The, the path that we've taken thus far, we, we started with some consultants around, from Learning for Justice, formerly teaching tolerance, and others that showed us that anti-bias and cultural competency practices in the classrooms have to start with our teachers and ourselves exploring our own identity. It's important, because only once teachers have had the time, support, and resources to think about their own privilege and identi, and identity, will they be ready to bridge into thinking about diversity, social justice, and action steps. We paired with a national consultant associated with Learning for Justice to help us think through the plan, and we had a compass curriculum group of teachers, of teacher leaders in the twenty-twenty-one school year, who regularly met with this consultant, and Tracy Wagner, our teacher, Director of Teaching and Learning, in order to learn about and, and think through a lot of that work. So in the district, I'll start with sort of the, the high-level view, at the state and the superintendent's level, the Mass Association of School Superintendents has developed what they call a mass-ready strategy document, that's in its first year of implementation, and the North Shore Superintendent's Group has monthly meetings where we're discussing and focusing on, on the work, most recently, our, our meetings have looked at some, some of the school districts that are doing equity audits, both internal and external equity audits, meaning either the staff inside the, you know, in, in the district is doing them, or, or folks from the outside in some of the bigger districts, and we've heard, we've heard from bigger districts thus far. At the elementary levels, our PLCs are focused on social justice questions, shared readings and discussions, some are professional development with the Learning for Justice Institute of this past, started and was held during the summer of two thousand and nineteen, our teachers are attending workshops on DEI topics and reporting back in the nineteen-twenty school year. Our PD Day keynote and workshops were on identity and cultural competence, two thousand and twenty-one, the Professional Development Day, twenty-twenty keynote and workshop presenter spoke about, I'm a good person, isn't that enough, leveling the playing field and transformational conversations, moving from fear to curiosity. The PD Day twenty-twenty workshops, some other workshops were building social emotional learning practice that supports all learners, what trauma-informed teaching practices look like, that was held both virtually and in person, and that was with Lakeisha Jeffries, Restorative Justice with Rich Cantrem, Cantrembo, I mess that up every time I say it, Challenges of Students on the Autism Spectrum in the General Ed Classroom with Kent Rude, Teach Real History, Inspire Real Citizens, Americans Who Tell the Truth with Robert Shetterly. PD Day in the twenty-one workshops were four level, four levers for anti-racist classroom with Latrice Lyle, Cultural Proficiency with Corey Mashburn, Students with High-Functioning ASD with David Gott Students with High Functioning ASD with David Got, Got Health. So you can see that there's a lot of workshops and, and professional development, professional learning happening. We've had workshops for teachers on having difficult discussions within their classrooms. Debbie Irving did a workshop for parents and guardians around, "I'm a Good Person, Isn't That Enough?" and exploring whiteness, if you will. Summer Book Club on Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain. There was a small group of us that read that over the summer. I'll talk more about that in a little bit. And the use of that book, Social Justice Compass Subcommittee with teacher membership from all schools. We had Tracy and Kathy McMahon, the middle school principal, look at the National Social Justice Standards and engage in professional learning with some consultants. We found that the National Social Justice Standards are actually already aligned with the Massachusetts History and Social Science Standards, as well as the new world language standards. So we don't need to bring in a standalone social justice curriculum, if you will. Instead, we need to fully implement the, the history and social studies and world language curriculums that are already standards-based. Our eighth-grade civics and humanities course and tenth-grade social studies course with student-led civics projects, it's around state law. We recently revised Objective Three of the Strategy for District Improvement that we have to specifically say that will build best practices to support diversity, equity, and inclusion. That was during the summer, this past summer. Ipswich, and it reads, Ipswich will prepare, will ensure that all students will be prepared to face the challenges presented by an increasing complex world that is more diverse than our immediate learning community. Last year, we provided teachers with resource materials and discussion points around the passage of Juneteenth as a holiday. This year, we'll be able to prepare appropriate lessons, and that'll be taught toward the end of the school year. This year, we also switched our focus from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day as a result of the vote of the school committee. And we worked with the staff to, to create appropriate lessons around that. We also developed resource lists for materials for each level. And then finally, we've also renewed our focus on our English learner program. You know, as, as you've probably seen in the community, we have a, our population of English learners are, is increasing. We have a number of new students this year. We're, we're hiring additional staff to support them in the schools. And so we're, we're working to make sure that we're welcoming those students and families into our, into our community. So what's, what's next? We have the formation of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Team within the school. The group is comprised of students and staff from very varied backgrounds. We're utilizing the Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain book with all middle and high school teachers through secondary learning cycles this year. We're finishing the curriculum writing that's been happening, and then starting the implementation of a pilot at the elementary social studies curriculum. And then that'll be the, through elementary learning cycles that'll be happening as well. And then we're bringing in more PD about ways to support our LGBTQ students and staff. So it's sort of a high-level overview of lots of what's going on in the, in the district. You know, it, it's interesting how, how different districts have, have approached this work. You know, some districts have it splashed all over the, the front pages of the paper, for better or worse. And, you know, in Ipswich, we're just kind of going about our business and doing the work without a lot of fanfare. And so I think that's why we may get questions about, are we doing anything? In fact, we are, we're doing quite a bit. Just wanted to provide that overview of, of what's happening, just so the folks have an idea of what's happening in our, in our buildings. And as I said, there's still plenty of work to do.
Questions?
Yeah. So I'm hearing a lot about, and you and I have had this conversation many times, about work focusing on being white, for lack of a better term, and how we are informed by our own experiences and how those can create biases that we're not even aware of, and I think that's great work. What is missing from your presentation, and what I feel like is missing constantly, is how do your families of, of color feel that we're doing as a district? To make sure that their kids are being seen, heard, and that when they're sitting in a room and a teacher is implementing this new curriculum, and they're one of a minority of students, how does that land with them? What are we doing to make sure that we are seeing our families of color, our students of color, when we roll these things out? Case in point, Waking Up White was a good read, but that does nothing to include your families of color, right? That automatically alienates them. And bringing in Debbie Irving, great, but how does that see your families of color? How does that make them feel heard? Being the mother of a biracial student and listening to Tracy come in and talk about, you know, disparate impact on students of color, I hear that differently than anybody else in this room because of who my child is. Is that talked about? Is that considered? Is that something that you teach your teachers to think about when they're presenting? When I listen to, having a student who's differently able than I listen to someone present, are they thinking about how that lands differently with me? Or any other parent of a kid who's not a typical learner? Any other parent who has a child of color? So I'd really challenge you to incorporate the experiences of your families of color and your students of color into any sort of examination and reflection that goes on in this district, because it's important. And I think there was a lot of heartache among that community with the search committee for the principals last year, because they didn't feel represented. And I don't want to see that repeated, because it's something we've talked about. And that's, that's a identifiable place for the district to show, we get it, and we didn't. And so I'd really love to hear that piece incorporated into whatever work we're doing as a district, because I surely know, nobody in this district has ever contacted my family about how we're doing. How did a slavery lesson land in my household when my child came home? Or his, his friend's household when he came home? And ask his parents, "Am I going to be a slave one day?" It lands differently. So please consider that, and please incorporate that. I guess it's not really a question, but...
So would, would that come from, would that conversation come from a counselor? Or would that, that's a question for you. Or would that come from the teacher?
I guess it doesn't matter who it comes from, it's that it comes. It's that it's, I see you. I get that this might have been a different experience, and we're just checking in. Because this is new for everybody, unfortunately. Some, some teachers knock it out of the park. Some teachers, it's a thing they hadn't really thought about before. Not good or bad, just, you know? But it, it does land differently. Being a family of color coming into this, this group, it's going to be a different experience.
Sure, I understand. That, a good point, excellent point. Follow-up question, on your DEI committee group that you formed, that, are there people of other ethnic backgrounds on the committee, including students?
Yes, we do.
I get it, but again, talk to your families.
Right.
Do not be afraid to engage in those conversations and find out actually how we're doing, instead of, we think we're doing great because we've never had the conversation to hear otherwise. It's important.
Okay. Are there any other comments, questions?
Actually, I had a question about the English learners, the staff that we've hired for that. Do we, are we confident that that's sufficient? Or are, you know, are building administrators still like, they're well-supported?
We're not there yet. We're still working at it. We've had, we've had some that have moved already. We've got, I think, four or five new ones in the pipeline. No, no, I know. So, so to answer your question, is it, is it enough? I don't know that yet.
But we have additional staff.
We're in the process of hiring additional staff.
So is this the same quandary that's happening in all of America, that we, that we can't find people?
Yes.
And I understand that the population we're serving may be the moving target. I just want to make sure that there's sufficient staff. Because we have, I'm under, have the understanding we have funds to hire.
Right. The funding is not the issue, people are the issue.
Okay, anything else? The, uh, next item on the agenda, School Committee Self-Evaluation Review. We've all filled this out, thank you. Thank you, Dr. O'Flynn.
This is the kind of delivery.
Yeah, thank you. The, so my suggestion is, is we talk about the things we, where we have disagrees or perhaps don't knows, instead of strongly agree and agree. Is that a good way to proceed, or would someone else like to proceed differently? Okay. So our first item is, School Committee Members Take Part in Educational Workshops and Conferences to Help Them Make Informed Decisions. There's, oh, we have a don't know, excuse me.
I was the don't know.
Committee regularly evaluates, is probably regularly relative to the goals and objectives that have been adopted.
And I'm, I'm still watching that. I, I know that there's been talk about setting goals and, and doing a more frequent check-in, so.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll get a check-in in January, February-ish. So, so let's, remember to keep that as an agenda item. The, then moving on to five, educational workshops and conferences. Yeah, we have busy lives, and we, we let that slip. And we don't do, we don't do any PD, frankly. I, I don't want to say, I don't know, I don't know what PD we would do.
What are folks' thoughts about that? I mean, there was three that agree and four that disagree.
I can tell you, I've done the MASC once, I've done Google and Education, two-day educational conference, which was great, probably about ten years ago, we were talking about going to the school and school. That was super useful, all the flipped classroom stuff was all you know. That was, that was very interesting. But in terms of like the school policy, the school stuff, other than the required stuff to be a school member, there's very little we do in terms of professional education. I do a ton more, all the time, like all the time. And, but this, this, my second job for the last five years, I've done very little on it. So I don't know if that's something that you'd rather, it certainly is.
Did you understand? I, I didn't get the last of it, the last of it, I'm sorry.
I think it's something we can do better.
Yeah, I totally agree. Do we have time? Do, if you'd like us to devote some energy to finding PD and conference opportunities?
Identifying local conferences that we could attend other than going in November down Cape Cod.
Okay.
Maybe there's other opportunities, you could say, hey, this, this conference is coming to Boston this summer. You guys might be interested for a day or two. Like the Google and Education one was another one that we have talked about, and I went for a couple days, it was really good.
MASC does a few things as well. I know I was on one just last week, and I think you were as well, about conflict of interests. And, you know, I thought it was particularly important with the new school building process coming along and an override request. We get, we gotta draw the fine line between presenter and politicker. And, and I thought that was an important one. There are MASC things to do, but we can look for other opportunities as well.
We can certainly bring presenters here. If there's a particular topic that the school committee wants to spend some, some time on, we can schedule a workshop session and have, have a presenter come in. If there's a, a night that's a, that we think is going to be lighter, or we can, you know, plan to have a lighter agenda evening on a regular school committee night, and have, have somebody come in, we can do that as well.
And we'd be happy to suggest, we'd be happy to entertain any options that you'd, any, any topics that you'd like to delve deeper in.
Yeah, I can't remember if I wrote agree or disagree. I feel like most of the stuff I've done has just been self, you know, me reading stuff online, or, you know, DOL website, or DED website, or anything, or just MASC website, looking for stuff on my own, or taking notes on stuff and getting something going on and looking it up. Because I don't know what it means, or, but, so I don't know. If we want to make stuff mandatory, or just, I think just having options, you know, is good.
Yeah, it's the educational workshops and conferences piece that was different, but we haven't done.
Okay.
MASC offers a fair number of things we've all done kind of individually, I think, over the last year. But it's that, it's that group thing where we're all there, you know, having a conversation. And that's the piece I think we haven't done a bit, at least as far as a workshop or conference in the last year.
We used to do that in retreats.
At retreats, yeah.
And, and we've always had other pressing matters to discuss. And so that's fallen to the wayside. So we can do that in a committee setting here. It would be, because of, because of open meeting requirements, it would be best to do some of those right here. So, so we'll, we'll, we'll see what's available. The next one that I, there are some disagrees on and, and some don't knows on is the Committee Regularly Evaluates the Superintendent Using a Mutually Agreed Process. We are coming up on our mid-cycle review.
January?
In January. We, did we do a mid-cycle review? One year we skipped. We did one last year, we skipped the year before, I believe, under Barry.
We did it last year.
Yeah, we did it last year. So, so whoever would, that has the don't know and the disagree, if there's any questions or comments.
I have to disagree, and it's, I just find the process weird. Like, Brian sits on the executive board of the school committee, which is the committee that evaluates him. So there's a conflict, in my mind, there's a conflict there, an obvious one. And then doing an evaluation based on, and I'm picking on you, but whoever who tells us, "This is what I've done, and this is why it's great", with no ability to sort of dig behind it and say, "Has this happened? Did it work? Is it great?" It just feels very, very pro forma and not substantive. And I guess if it's an evaluation, let's, let's evaluate. But if it's just kind of ticking a box, then let's be a little more.
So, so the one thing we don't do is ask Dr. Blake to leave the room while we discuss him, discuss his performance in an executive session. We, we do that, we do that in, we actually do do that at one point in the summer traditionally, but we could do that. We could talk amongst, as a committee, freely. And it, and I'm sorry, your presence sometimes would be, would be an impediment to, to free speaking. So that's one thing we can do to improve that. So, that's one thing we can do to improve that process for you, for us?
I think it'd be nice to even be able, like, if we talk, like, the math curriculum was a big thing from last year. You know, I would have liked to have been able to talk to math teachers, like, "Hey, how is this going? What are the concerns? Is this being rolled out well? Is there something?" Like, there's no ability to test any of these statements because that's not the, the process, right? So, I guess that's where it feels a little odd.
Yep.
I'm not necessarily saying it needs to be different, but I'm, I do think it's a, it's a bit of a...
It's a, it's a wonky process, for sure.
Yeah.
It's a state, it's a state-mandated process that, that we have to follow. This is, I mean, I never had evaluations like this in, in New Hampshire with a state-mandated system.
Yeah, it just feels weird.
It does feel weird, and I remember feeling that last spring, and I called you, because I, I feel like, you know, we help set the goals, and then you kind of tell us what you do, and then we kind of say, "Okay."
Right, right.
But we're not able to dig behind the scenes and say, you know, "What do your administrators think of you, and how's that rapport, and how's the, you know?" We can't get to the need of it, you know?
Yeah, so it's, I don't know, it just feels like a very, and again, maybe that's, it's just a check-the-box type of thing, but then I think...
So, so this statewide evaluation framework probably started five or seven years ago. Before that, it was free-form. We all wrote out, we all looked at our goals, wrote out reviews, handed them to the chair, who synthesized them into one report, and he read the report to the record, and then we talked about his salary at the end of the year. We never really had a mid-year, and we didn't have the frameworks which we're deciding on on different topics. So, I think this is an improvement compared to the old process. It was very free-form before, and some people would go after the superintendent, and some people would be very complimentary, but it was up and down about whatever you wanted to talk about. The superintendent in the past, and always has had, uh, evidence of his performance over the year accumulated usually at the superintendent's office, and would be well reviewed in advance. I think Brian provided all that type of information. The maybe great thing behind, I guess, is, I don't know whether it's up to us, or whether we just have to stick with the frameworks and how our review...
Well, the other, the other piece to it, too, is, and I, you know, I think I commented on this, you know, during the goal-setting phase. The, the goals are, and, and filling out that form is, is but one piece of being the superintendent of schools for an entire school district. It's, it's not all of what I do. You know, I mean, I could easily sit in my office, set the goals, sit in my office, and every Friday morning say, "Okay, I need to do this today to, to meet the goals." That's not what it's about. So, it's, you know, there's much more to running the district and the day-to-day operations of the district that, that aren't necessarily reflected in, in a singular goal. And that's, that's a piece that I think is, you know, is not taken into consideration.
You know, I think, I think we should have an, when we do our mid, mid-cycle review, we should, we should at least start with an executive session without our superintendent present. To try to refine the process. "Types and frequencies of communication are agreed to in advance," disagree. How would, uh... How is this an issue, and where do people think there's room for improvement?
I honestly can't remember if I was a disagreeer and agree.
Okay. Anyone else seen a way to improve our communications?
I guess it's that, I don't think we do agree to types and frequency. I think it's as needed and as people...
We kind of agree to it in our subcommittee, you know, in terms of the frequency of the newsletters and any other communication that goes out to social media, but we don't, you know, we don't do it as a whole.
Yeah, I don't, but again, I don't know that I, I was a disagree, so it's a weird question.
Yeah.
Does anyone else?
It's a weird question, I don't know what it's getting at. Because it's under the committee superintendent relations.
So, is it my communication with the school?
Yeah. That's why I disagreed. There is no, we can talk to you whenever we want, about whatever we want.
Right.
Like, we don't agree in advance, but we can talk to you about, or if we call, or email.
I do appreciate, not that I've taken advantage of you, but I do appreciate the emails now that go out before the planning for the agenda. I, I see that, and I'm like, "Oh, is there anything, is there anything I want to bring up?" And as I say, I haven't taken advantage of it, but I do really like that.
Yeah.
I missed one, I'm sorry. I missed one, too, that's not last meeting, the meeting before.
It's hard to get into that routine, but, you know, of doing it, but I, I agree.
"Superintendent informs the committee of major personnel decisions."
I think I was the disagree again, because again, I don't think, I mean, do, I don't know, do you, do you need to? I don't think you need to, right? I mean, I know sometimes, like, if there's a retirement, we hear about it, but I'm assuming that any personnel decision, you're not bringing to the school.
No, not usually.
This is a question, because it seems like a, it's a policy-operation separation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, why would you do that?
Right.
And a lot of it's a HR issue, so you wouldn't.
And, and a lot of things, frankly, if it's, you know, if there, if it's on the side of it being an HR issue or a disciplinary issue, I can't share that, because at the end of the day, the school committee could be the judge, if you will, to hear that case. So, if I've already told you all of what I'm dealing with in a particular instance, then you can't be a, an unbiased judge, or a listener, or whatever we want to call it.
Yes, I think I was the disagree, but it's not for like negative reasons, it's because I don't think you need to.
"Superintendent and committee treat each other with mutual respect and professionalism." Now, we have a disagree here, so, um, is there an issue for that?
I'm fairly certain I was the disagree, and I think it was because I know that I yelled at Brian a couple weeks ago and wasn't very... I mean, if we're evaluating ourselves, right? Honest evaluation.
It was a good conversation. I appreciate it.
"Both the committee and the superintendent operate on a no-surprises model." There's another disagree.
That was my disagree, and it's why I yelled at Brian. So, they go hand in hand.
Okay.
So, no surprises, just for historical interest. Certain committee members would, on controversial subjects where they felt they were in the minority, would bring a crowd of people un, by surprise to a meeting to all support her. So, so you can load committee meetings and influence the committee's votes, and it's, it's not a politically appropriate thing to do. I think you should let us know in advance that. "I'm concerned about this thing that you're planning on doing, and I, and I'd like, you know, I'd like to have a further discussion about it, rather than just bring a bunch of your friends in to say what you're intending to say."
I'm going to say it pretty clear in the training for the orientation.
Yeah.
But that's in our norms, and, and those norms are less than five years old, and I'm so glad we have them.
Even the way you call the chair and say, "You know, I'm concerned about this or that," and, um, let them know it's going to happen.
"The committee has a public relations plan for the school." Two disagrees here. Let's start with the public, person in that business. Are you in that business, kind of? Well, you're in the communications business.
I'm a better...
Okay.
I think I disagree.
Is that your disagree, Kate? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I probably should have said, "I don't know." I listed some policies, that would have been all the difference.
No, 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 I think I just...
We don't have a public relations plan, do we?
No, I don't feel like we do.
No, I don't think we do, yeah.
I mean, we have a, we have a goal.
Right, we have a subcommittee schedule.
The newsletters, et cetera, and community outreach, but a plan makes it sound like we've got like strategy.
But it might be something to consider, like thinking about tonight.
Right.
What's the public relations strategy that we're going to adopt to, like, the public's asking us to be a little more transparent or more communicative? Like, is that something that we could do better? Maybe it's a goal for next year.
Yeah, I was a disagree for that exact reason. We didn't really have any plan or design around it.
Yeah. A lot of school districts either have a, a formal plan in place that they've, that they've developed, or they have public relations departments. A lot of, a lot of your bigger school districts, or wealthier school districts that can afford to have that additional personnel, have, have a public relations person that does all of their social media, all of their messaging, all of their, um, you know, planning around organized communications, you know, district-wide. So, it's something that, to your point, Emily, we could certainly develop, but we don't have it.
I don't know of the...
Our communications subcommittee, I think, does a great job with, you know, organizing newsletters and, and, you know, we started the meeting greets and things like that, but even our, even our social media presence isn't, it's not great, because we don't have the manpower to do it.
And we don't have the bandwidth in our own committee to take on another task.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I mean, the communications committee could take it up, I think, as a, we could investigate it and see what, you know, look and see what some other schools do. I don't think we're going to have a staff member to do it, but we could certainly look into, you know, I think it's, it's a good idea to have a good strategy for these bigger issues that we really need to involve the community in. How do we go about doing that? You know, we have these goals to be transparent, but that's hard to do. So, I'm up for, you know...
So, that'll be discussed at the next communications subcommittee. Super, thank you. "The committee encourages the inclusion of community members in as much decision-making as possible." There's a disagree here.
That was me. I think we can do better. It takes so much work, um, but again, I just feel like that's a place that we can, we can do better. You know, we have time for people to talk, but I don't know, sometimes when we get some vocal dissension, we're, we could do better.
It's a, it's a two-way street, too. We're always, we're always here to listen to comments from the public, and email's the best way. It's best to have a two-way conversation than a one-way one on social media. It's always better to have a two-way conversation.
Yeah, but sometimes you have to meet people where they are, and like it or not, they're on social media, and they're not here.
Okay.
That's true.
Yeah?
Listen, I wrote the, I agree for all these, but I think it's, it's...
Yeah, it's not a...
It doesn't mean like, I think it's great.
No, I get it.
We try, but I think it's...
And I think that's, no, there's one, no, that's it, that's the last, that's the last word I missed.
No, it's not.
Public input is welcome and is done according to an established policy.
There's a disagree on that.
This is a conduct, the conduct of our meetings, and how we, how we run the scene, what happens to scene.
So, there's a disagree here. I don't know who the disagree is with, but...
I guarantee it was me, but, um... No, I just think sometimes we're, we're better at it than others, you know? I've seen, I've seen parents get shouted at, and I, it makes me uncomfortable. I've heard, seen public comments be rigidly adhered to when something might be uncomfortable, or a gentleman can come late and speak more than once, another gentleman can speak more than once, so I think we need to be...
Consistent.
I agree, yeah. And I've, I've said that, I've said that before, you know, we, we... Public comment is, is the opportunity, and I'm going to do a piece in our next newsletter about this, um, public comment is just that, it's, it's to, for the school committee collectively to hear from the public concerns that they have. It's, it's not intended, and it, and it's supposed to be on, on things that are on the agenda for that night. It's not supposed to be a dialogue. It is supposed to be framed in time, and not a, not a necessarily a discourse. It's to take input from the public on discussions that, and business that the school committee is then going to be dealing with that night. Similar to what happened tonight, in, in that, you know, we, we listened. We, we listened to all of what they had to say, and we should do that every meeting, but keep it, it, it should be time, um, time-framed, meaning there, there should, much like our, our town meetings, you get three minutes. Any new, you know, new, new comments are welcome, new, new ideas are welcome, but to have 10 people say the same exact thing over and over isn't, isn't moving the conversation forward. And then, then the board goes about their business. This is a business meeting of the school committee. It's not a, it's not a public forum necessarily, unless we set it up as a public forum, and that's a different format altogether. So, I agree with you.
So, what we also do is go outside the bounds of that a little bit, and we allow people when matters are, when it's prescient to, for example, we had someone who wanted to make, two people wanted to make additional comments after we'd spoken. It's not in our, it's in our rights to have them save that for the next meeting, but it's not fair, I don't think. And so, it's always better to hear, hear what people have to say.
Yes.
I'm probably the person that was trying to control a meeting of 300 people that you're referring to, and that, uh, I, when there's a large volume of people, the chair, the chair has to, um, has to make sure that everybody who wants to get heard gets heard, and that we, uh, we hear from the people that want to get heard once first, before we circle back and go to the people that have follow-up questions. I think that's fair, and, um, and, uh... So, uh, sometimes I'm abrupt in my delivery, and I'll work on that every day for the rest of my life. The, uh, the, um, and try to improve that. The, but, but you have to, you have to make sure that people don't repeat themselves, and that other people don't say the same thing, just to keep the people, just to allow other people to be heard.
I get it. I just think as we're moving towards more contentious conversations, it's not going to be looked at well if some people are speaking out of turn, or twice, where other people are shut down. I think it's, you, I, I agree with Brian, you have, you know, the rules of public comment, or you have three minutes. Each person can go once until everybody's had a turn to speak, and that's what it is. And even if somebody's repeating the same thing their neighbor repeated, they feel heard, instead of, "Nope, sorry, you're just repeating yourself." Like, that's not building community, and that's what we're here for.
I think I, I think I made that comment on someone who said the same, same, same topic three times, same thing three, three times.
I'm sort of not debating the specific issue, I'm just saying...
I understand, but I hear you loud and clear. I hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, and we need to be, be very conscious to be equitable.
Yeah, yes.
I'm, yes.
Do you like the idea, I don't, it was this fall, I think, we talked about the fact of, that we don't respond to citizens' comments, but that if an item comes up which we think should get a response, that we can always put that on an agenda, as an agenda item in a, in a follow-up meeting and say, you know, "We'd like to come back and address this, we've, we've talked about, we've looked into it," or whatever, so that people feel like, you know, if there is an important issue that, that they are needing feedback on that, they can get that. I like that we're...
I agree, and that's part of the reason why it's so important to capture people's names and addresses, so that at least we have a way to get in touch with them.
I spent three hours, three hours today... I spent three hour, three hours today trying to get Jack Moon's number, Mr. Moon's number. I did get it. We did speak before the meeting tonight. No, that no, that phone didn't get answered. I had another hour after that, but thank you for your help. But that's why the the agenda setting is important. Bring that stuff up. You know, hey, don't forget about such and such.
I have some public comments.
Sure.
I've seen on other towns' agendas a little asterisk next to the citizens' comments with our public comments with a little a disclaimer, a description, the parameters, so it's something we could consider to have on our regular agenda. It's kind of like we have for the the start for new business. It kind of defines what that is. So we could kind of have a little disclaimer about.
Okay.
That's a great idea.
That's a good idea. Would you send send some language from some that you like, some other districts?
Do you volunteer?
I don't know. Make a suggestion and all the same. Yeah, that's fine. I just have to think of where I found it. And the other thing I was going to say is, hold on. I I forgot.
Welcome to my world. Okay, everyone's freezing cold.
It is cold tonight.
Yeah, it is. I want to wear my orange hat in the worst way, but I can't. Remember the time on Zoom I looked like I was about to rob a bank? The, is there anything else on this self-evaluation? It's a good exercise. We need to do it. Continue to do it.
All right, I think I'm up next again.
No, here it is. It's just like my world.
Does the public comment, sort of parts of the agenda apply to subcommittee meetings as well?
Yes. Yes, we need subcommittee. Yes, we have public comment in subcommittee meetings.
Yep.
Called ahead of that at the School Facilities Working Group. We were letting people speak. We weren't rigid to that, so we need to be cognizant to be rigid of the public comment section in subcommittee meetings.
Yeah, like we allowed two other people to, two people to speak tonight after they had questions and raised their hands. We don't want to be someone who shuts someone off either, too.
Right, but we need to delineate between the subcommittee having their meeting and it's not one big, that be group with them.
Understood. Understood.
All right, I think I'm up next again. Last couple of weeks have been, seems like a whirlwind these days. I had my weekly meetings with both elementary principals. We had the first choral concert last last week here. They they did it during the day, the high school chorus, very good. We had an I E F meeting last Monday.
I was not present for that.
Okay. We had a tribe board chair meeting. I think we have another one scheduled tomorrow morning. I don't know that I'm going to be able to make that.
Nine thirty.
In another meeting. Had our administrative team meeting last week reviewing our strategy for district improvement and planning the the school improvement plan presentation for next week, or for our next meeting, rather. The four principals, instead of doing it over the course of two meetings, the four principals collaboratively are doing one presentation.
For the school improvement plan?
For the school improvement plan. They're each going to talk about their individual school plans, but they're all doing it together as a team one night.
Awesome.
Very different. We also discussed educator evaluation, safety procedures, and we had a student services update. I was on the commissioner's call to let the superintendents know about 10 minutes before the announcement was made about the mask mandate being extended till January 15th. It was much appreciated by districts that were struggling with the mask mandate and most of the schools. I think there might be 18 or 20 schools now that are that are looking at the 80% vaccination rate and looking to to change their their status. We're still not even close to that. Attended a virtual convening this past week on addressing hate in our communities. That was put on the by the Attorney General's office. It was understanding and combating hate crimes, enforcement incidences, and what resources are available. I have a resource list available for us. North Shore Education Consortium had our board of directors meeting last week. I also attended a statewide meeting for English language learners. And we're in the, what they call a low incidence group because unlike Lawrence, say, that has, you know, very high population of non-English speaking students, we're in a low incidence group. Even in that group, we're, we have a low in, we're we're low in the low incidence group, but we're we're moving up with the with the number of of students that are moving into the district. Attended a town library event to honor and recognize Ed Emberly for his work. That was last week. It was his birthday. So they had a presentation and a little reception there. Some of our students were involved, so I headed over. We had the School Facilities Working Group last week. I attended a MSBA webinar for ballot questions in the law. Our D E I group had its first meeting last week. We had agenda planning. The North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable happened last Friday. We talked about that earlier. Had a several internal meetings with with staff members and administrators around some personnel issues. Attended the high school council meeting this week, and next week I'll be attending the middle school council meeting, and then probably either later in November or early December, I'll attend the council meetings at the elementary schools. Had a phone conference call with Laura Rochaine from DESI, who's organizing the onsite that's scheduled for later this year. And Monday, there's an informational webinar for all the schools that are involved this year, so that was one of my goals. It's one of my goals because we were selected to have this onsite, so that process is going to start moving forward. So we just had a brief phone call about, you know, sort of an overview of the process and how to start preparing. So there'll be more information on that after the meeting on Monday. Professional Development Committee met Tuesday, and we spent time reviewing the Professional Development Day and the feedback from that, and the process of trying to have Lynn Lyons come back mid-year to do a presentation and do some work with the two two separate groups, one day with the elementary teachers and another day with the with the middle and high school teachers. She was very well received and and staff got a lot of good information from her and would like to have her back and answer some specific questions and give them some more more of her time and more tips and strategies, I guess, is the way to put it. We have Policy Subcommittee on Tuesday night. You'll hear about that shortly. And Cheryl and I met yesterday to discuss budget preparations and some personnel topics. And then I had a monthly meeting with our I E A president yesterday. And here I am today.
Any questions for Dr. Blake? Laura, may I have, I have a question. I have a, I've lost my subcommittee sheet. I keep looking at last year's. Would you email me this year's? I'm just fumbling and I can't find it. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Dr. Blake. Subcommittee Working Group and Liaison Reports. I know the.
I guess the easiest way to do that is just who's met in the last two weeks.
I know the, go ahead.
Well, work got in the way of my favorite school committee activity, which was the Traverse of Wetherell grants meeting today. However, I did review the amazing grants that were submitted, and I think the majority were tentatively approved. There's a couple of questions on some of them, but again, they were absolutely exciting and interesting and really, really focused at the kids. There were one or two that was that were, you know, for the kids, but not necessarily as enriching. But I don't know. Overall, it's just, it's amazing to be a part of the process and read these grants and see what's coming out of our teachers. And the fact that we have the money available to fund these is even more amazing, so. I know that we've talked about doing sort of a presentation like the pain grant did, and Jen and I talked about maybe me helping her out with that so she wouldn't have to. She already has so much on her plate, so that's something that I'll look to put together after letters go out and the pendings are approved or not.
So like three meetings from now?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Beautiful. Thank you. And we all got the letter. I don't know if we all got that letter. Yeah, I think we all got that letter last week that with the the initial, the initial thoughts on the FEPI's distribution.
Yeah, pretty significant.
That was a huge, $930,000.
Yeah.
That was insanely great to get that letter.
Yeah.
And it's unbelievable that Ipswitch has this opportunity that that that.
That's just amazing.
Yeah, you were blown away, too. You know, you had to have been. Blown away.
Yeah.
So that's all I can say.
I think we need, I think.
Super thankful.
The first distribution based on the calculation of the corpus, I think, was in 2015, and it was in the low 600s. So the fact that it's gone up from the low 600s to 930 in this short period of time is amazing.
So what happens when the market crashes? What what happens then?
It's filtered. I mean, we're buffered.
Right, we have, but there's a good buffer built in. It's the last 12 quarters or something like that.
I asked the financial guy.
Well, the formula is based on, right, the average value of the last 12 quarters times 3%, that's half of the distribution. The other half is based on what last year's distribution was. But then there's also a reserve set aside prior to that calculation, so it's a very smooth distribution if the market.
It really should be like 1.2 at this point.
What's that?
It should be higher.
Yeah.
Well, no, but he's trying to, he's trying to guarantee, guarantee it's a smooth, it's a smooth runway instead of abrupt.
You're right. I mean, if it was, it's definitely a very conservative distribution, which is good because we can weather the storm of a crazy market, and that's happened. We've had some ups and downs in the market. It's been remarkably consistent, and it's just, it's gone up.
Okay, thank you. I bet Laura's already emailed that to me, but I never looked at my email. Thank you, Laura.
Funny, I was just asking. But any other subcommittees meet the last two weeks?
We're going to talk about policy. That's a big one.
Well, we had School Facilities Working Group met, and we pretty much discussed what we've we've it was about, it was about BILEX and and.
And an SOI, this question, yeah.
And an SOI, so so we've discussed that tonight. Any other side in policy? Who's the policy chair? Pot?
So we have a bunch of policies for you to tentatively approve this evening. We continued in Section E, which is Support Services, and we were able to finish that up with the exception of, I think, one that we were going to ask Chubb to look at, which we haven't sent to you yet, but it is E C F, which is Energy Conservation, which we thought was very much your bailiwick.
Okay.
So we thought we'd have you take a look at that. The ones that we have, there are very few changes. You can look in the folder and see them. It starts with E C, and I believe the way they've been done is so that you can, hopefully you can see. Okay, never mind. In that case, I can tell you what was changed. Okay. So basically, in E C, we changed School Department to School District. The same is true in E C A, and those were both Buildings and Grounds Management kind of things. Because we thought, you know, we are not a, we are not a department of the town. We are the school district, separate department. In E C A C, after the word responsible in paragraph two, we added to the administration, just so that it's clear who we're responsible to. In E C A F, which is about videotaping in the schools, we added for a period, basically, that videotape, it's not videotape nowadays, I'm sorry, it's just recording, security recordings, showing my age, will be kept for a period of no less than 14 days. So in the event that we need to look back, we will have at least 14 days' worth of footage. Then there were no changes in E D B A or E D C. In E E A, we added a second sentence to the goal. This one is about bus transportation and our contract, the way we negotiate them, and we added a second sentence to say, "A secondary goal is to focus on working towards reducing our carbon footprint to the extent practicable." E E A A through E E A J, there were no changes. And E F D, we removed the last sentence because basically it said that this information on this is included in the student handbooks, and it is no longer included in the student handbooks. So that was already X'd out, and we just took it out.
Because it's on the website. It's on the official website that's available.
And it's also, it also goes home, you know, every, at the beginning of every year. And the last one, E I B A, again, no changes. So just a few very small changes, and the one that we wanted Chubb to take a look at.
We'll look at later.
Yeah, so, any questions? I know it's a lot of policies.
I'll entertain a motion, but I have a comment about tonight and and the vote. It might be best to have, it is best to have these on the agenda.
Okay.
Rather than with, because we've asked, we've got information discussion and action items now on our agenda.
Sure. We can vote it next time.
No, we've, no, we can vote it tonight, but but we should in the future put it on the agenda for policy to discuss.
Okay.
So so. It's more transparent.
Yeah.
I think we've done that in the past, years past. So instead of talking about it in our subcommittee reports, we talk about it as an agenda item.
Okay.
When we have policies to vote on.
We're going to have them a lot as we're going.
That's fine. That's fine.
Smooth to support.
Yes.
Second. Any any further discussion? All those in favor? Yes, unanimous. Thank you. The, any other subcommittees, liaisons, working groups?
I attended the first meeting of the Ipswitch STEAM team.
Oh, good.
Which was very interesting. Got to meet everybody, sort of talked about for, because there are a few new members, sort of what what's happening, what the plan is for the year. But the bulk of our time was spent meeting with Jake Foster, who has been brought in as part of one of the pain grants, I believe, from last year. And he is a consultant who's been brought it, been brought in to look at the middle school and high school outdated labs and do an assessment. And so he did an interesting exercise, which he is also doing with the educators in each of the buildings. And that was potential Ipswitch STEAM innovations. 10 years from now, I'd love for students to have the opportunity to. And then there were a bunch of different possibilities, and we broke up into teams of two, and we were each supposed to come up with like our two biggest, like, number one things. So the gentleman I was paired with, we chose contribute to community needs or discussions, example, the impact of removing a local dam, regularly solve problems as part of the curriculum. But it was interesting because the kids and the adults kind of a different thing. So so he was getting our input and kind of talking about the plan, and then we're going to be meeting again in November. But it was an interesting group and hopefully an exciting fair in the spring.
And a return to normalcy.
Yes.
Which is always a good thing.
I've met with him a couple of times to to just see how the pro process and the project is going, because, you know, one of one of my big things is, it's one thing to to upgrade the labs and buy new beakers and microscopes, but what else can we do? And that's sort of what what my push was. You know, we're on the coast. Why can't we do more with marine biology? In a similar vein, you know, I got an email from Essex, not Essex Tech, Whittier today. They're starting a marine. They're starting a marine engine program. Now, I mean, it, it's pretty simple. I mean, not simple, but, but you know, it's a need in this area. So, so you know, it kind of ties in with the whole, the science pieces is that we've got these great resources right around us and, and great needs solving real world problems. Let's reimagine it. So at the end of this, I'm hoping that he's going to give me sort of three tiers. You know, one tier being, you know, replacing the, the beakers and the, you know, buying new microscopes up to redesigning classrooms and wing, you know, maybe even a, you know, additional classroom space for a marine biology program and what that might look like and, you know, other, other spaces that are going to take, you know, maybe a bond issue. Who knows?
We're not spending money today.
No. No, we're not spending any money anytime soon. Or, or FEFFIs, you know, for, you know, a $500,000.
Exactly.
Or, you know, bio labs, going to bio labs and say, hey, this is something that we want to do. So, you know, I'm, I'm really pushing them with that grant to, to get us there.
You know, um, Tisha maybe just think someone like Bio Labs would love to have a partner, like a FEFFIs grant to, you know, enhance the FEFFIs grant to, to build that. So you're 250.
See, I'm more like, I'd rather have like AP Spanish and like algebra in eighth grade and maybe more kids take physics. Maybe more kids, maybe, maybe kids have more AP economics available in school, not V H S. There are lots of easy ways to make things that are happening now better, rather than like big, big, big dream stuff.
Yeah. Yeah. We heard that from John and the.
You can do it.
I think that sounds awesome, but I also, the stuff about ideas like this is it reaches all the students, not just the AP students.
No, I'm saying everyone should do algebra in eighth grade. Yeah.
No, I get that, but like adding AP doesn't necessarily benefit every kid. Stuff like this benefits everything. It's an important distinction, I think.
So, uh, anything else? The, uh, were you going to speak again?
I was just going to say, other, other, any other subcommittees or?
I mean, it's communications related, but how was your meet and greet with, um, Jeff?
Did you have the orange hat? It was cool.
Yeah, I wore the orange hat there.
Um, I thought it was a beacon that more people would come over, but we did get to, to speak to a few folks and saw a lot of faces coming in and getting treats and coffee.
It was positive.
Yeah, better than Kate and I. It sounds like you, you had four.
Yeah. Yeah.
I.
Better than Brian and Brady Barnes.
Well, you know, I, I was just going to say, I, I think at some point we, we should, and maybe at our next communications subcommittee, think about that and the, and the use of the time and, and the, the payoff, I guess.
Yep.
You know, um, because we've, we've got a lot, we've got a lot going on and that's.
An hour? I know. I think it's.
But it's more than an hour. It's, you know, it's.
I get it.
Planning, preparation and then.
No, I, hey, I, I went there three times to get, to get permission. I get it. But, uh, the, uh, the, what, I do want to, you know, it, it increases our accessibility. And I'm hopeful that people, you know, we had real, we had real people with directed questions today, which was healthy.
Good.
So, so it was good.
And it's about thinking of ways that we're going to the people. So like the, the event on, I forget what day we're, we're serving dinner.
The 29th of November.
So, yep, finding other places to go that we're going to the, the groups.
Yeah.
Well, we can certainly, I'll add it to the school committee, um, communications.
Okay.
Like just to at least discuss it. Cause we've each done two, so let's.
Yep.
Yeah. Understood.
Whether it's working or not.
I think there's a fundraiser at the brewery coming out for Winthrop. I'm just saying, or it might be for both elementaries.
Oh.
I just saw, I signed up for that. I'm just saying that, you know, it's a place we could all go.
I can't say, I have one beer and I'm done. I can't go to that.
You don't have to have a beer.
Well, yeah, you have to. I have to if I'm at the brew party. The, uh, the, okay, uh, new business, this is kind of, I have a little bit of new business. Uh, or, or we have a zero carbon resolution that we have signed. Um, there's a questionnaire that's gone, that I've sent to Dr. Blake that Chris Rayce has partially filled out. Um, we're going to put it as an agenda item to discuss. I'd like to invite Chris to this meeting as well and talk about how our facility, use him for a double team and ask him about, uh, get a facilities presentation. How are we doing? How's the heat working? Leaks in the roof? All, all the stuff I like and you might not. But, but, but.
Why it's so cold in here tonight?
Why it's so cold?
Yeah, exactly. Oh, maybe that's why I'm getting just giant cramps in my legs tonight. Um, any other new business?
Well, you should talk about, uh, the state tournament games. People might enjoy going to the field hockey.
Oh yeah, you missed that. You missed that. We did, but, but there, there is, there are.
Caroline's report and then John followed up.
John, John backed it up, but, but when is the volleyball playing next?
They play tomorrow night. They're the one seed in division four, number one. They play the number 32 team, uh, tomorrow.
Well, volleyball, uh, field hockey plays Saturday at noon in, on the turf field. That'll be a fun time.
I don't know what the second game will be.
So, so. Yeah, it's fun. It's really fun to watch.
But that's where school spirit is at.
Yep.
A lot of kids will turn out.
Yep. Yeah, it's great. I expect full, full stands on Saturday as well. Uh, lectures and bills. Cheryl, all set?
Yeah.
Judy, thank you. Consent agenda. Look at that. Thank you. Cause you know I'd be taking. Move the school committee to accept the open session meeting minutes from October 21st, 2021.
So I just have one comment that.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I was not present at the meeting on 10/21. So if my name could be removed as.
Oh, as being present.
Present members.
Yeah.
Then I would.
Thank you.
Be comfortable.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. All those in favor of that? Thank you. Uh, and motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ipswich.
Good night.
Good night.